Okay, is everybody ready? Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled Committee of the Whole meeting. We call this meeting, or today's date, is Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. The time is 9:00 a.m. We have a full quorum of councilors and administrative staff present. We'll turn this, and welcome everybody who's going to be making a presentation today, and we'll try to move people up on the agenda and deviate from us if we need to do so. We'll turn the agenda items over to our city administrator, Britt C. Brandis. Britt?
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is Angie Drake to discuss concerns with the updated recommendations for the zoning ordinance.
Come on up, and if you would please turn the mic to green, or turn on, and please state your name again once for the record, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting.
My name is Angela Drake, and I am here to discuss the ordinance of main-level buildings. I just wanted to say thank you so much for allowing me to talk, not only on behalf of myself as a business owner, but as many business owners that I have talked to that are not here today. I think that the concerns are, number one, the parking. If we would allow the main-level buildings to become residential, the parking is the number one. Number two is, this is going to be the dwellings of people. There's no green space. Where are the people going to go out to get fresh air, to barbecue? If we allow this to happen, they're going to be barbecuing on this, on our sidewalks, on our streets. They're gonna, if they have children, they're going to be allowing the children to be playing in the streets, which is unsafe. Lawn chairs being put up on our city streets. It's just, I don't see anything good coming of this. There's so many concerns when I talk to other business owners about this. We, we as business owners want our downtown Virginia to be beautiful. We want people to come. We want shops. We want it to stay commercial. That's why we chose downtown Virginia for our businesses. And a lot of you guys might not see what goes on every day, and it might look really good on paper, but in all actuality, we live and breathe it every single day downtown. When you see what goes on down there with the people down there, and people are afraid to come downtown, especially at night, because of some of the people on the streets, that's not good for anybody's business. And I feel, and I know I talked to quite a few people too, that if this does go through, it's going to drive a lot of businesses out, which we tried so hard with Revive Virginia to keep us downtown. And I just, I just thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. And there's a lot of other concerns as well, too, with this. If you look at, say, Stillwater, people love going to Stillwater. People love going to, like, the Brainerd area, because you go there, you feel safe, you can bring your families there. People stay down there. They love going there. You know, they make it a destination. That's what I would love to see for Virginia, because it is so beautiful. When I, on my lunch break, I walked around the lake. It is so beautiful. It has so much potential. But if we allow this to happen, it's going to bring in people and things that we don't want, that would not be good for our city and our downtown. And I just really hope that everybody reconsideres this, because we don't want to see homeless, we don't want to see the tents on the street. Like, if you go downtown Minneapolis to Hennepin, and what has happened in San Francisco? San Francisco used to be the most beautiful, vibrant town, but they allowed this to happen. And once we allow this to happen, it's really hard to go back, because it won't, it won't. But if we can prevent it and stop it now, and keep our streets safe, and keep the businesses downtown, I really feel like it would be, if you guys could just think about the whole picture. So I appreciate your time, and thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Angie. Would you just stay up here for just one moment?
Sure.
Just to let you know that under our other items concerned, under item 12, we'll be discussing planning zoning recommendations and amendments, and taking account of your representation today. We'll be discussing that at length before we move forward. But if you hold on just a minute, there's a council that'd like to speak, Councilor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just, if you could clarify the difference between folks living on the main level of Main Street and living in the upstairs where there's residential already built in, can you please clarify why that's different? And then, if you could, I don't understand how allowing individuals to live on the main floor leads to tents in the street. Like, could you connect those dots for me, too, please?
Sure. So let's use the Orbs Building, for example, or the old Orbs Building. It has a ton of windows around it. People coming downtown to spend money at our businesses, it would be really hard to cover up all of those windows with blinds and stuff. People don't want to drive downtown and see people living on the main level where they can't, like, close the windows and the blinds. I mean, you're going to have people walking around in their underwear. Our clients and customers don't want to see that. I mean, that is for commercial businesses. You know, people, people don't want to see people living on the main level of Main Street. At least, I don't. And I know a lot of business owners don't want that either. And I did go around and talk to the business owners, and we have 33 sign signatures that don't want this.
My question is, how is that different than folks living upstairs?
Because upstairs, there is windows and blinds, and you only have one level. And to my understanding, is that we kind of actually do have a little bit of a problem with the people in the Old Deli that are living in that building. If you drive, and I don't know if you guys have driven back behind the deli, I haven't until two days ago, when somebody mentioned it, I drove back behind the deli. It is not good back there. There is junk back there. It's not good. And I feel like, where, if we allow this, it's going to be more of that. And people, where, where are the little kids going to go and play? Where are people going to barbecue if they live on the main level? Where are they going to put their lawn chairs up? It's going to be on the main street of Virginia. We don't want that. Don't.
And can you connect the dots between living on the main street and putting up tents, please?
So, living upstairs is an apartment upstairs. It has been grandfathered in since I can remember. We've been here 18 years. A family comes in, they buy a business, they want to live on the upper level. Completely different. We have no problem with that whatsoever. But the problem is, is people living on the main level, number one, is taking away from potential businesses moving in. Why would we want to do that? Why would we want to take away from the potential of business owners starting up businesses to make downtown better? The people that are going to be living downtown in these old structures are not going to have the means or the funds to spend money in our businesses. Now, say, for instance, somebody wants to come in and totally gut those buildings out and make, say, 55-year and older apartment buildings, or condominiums. So people come in, and they have a really, really nice place to have an apartment and to live, and hopefully, we get more restaurants on the main street where they can just walk. They're older, they probably don't want to drive, like you see in some areas of the communities and the towns.
So I get that. My question is, you specifically said if we allow this to happen, we'll have tents on Main Street. And I'm trying to draw the connection between first-floor living and tents on Main Street.
So, the tents on Main Street, okay. So you, you have these people coming in and living on the main level. This is their home. This is their home. Their children, if they have children, they could possibly be in the streets. How safe is that, running in and out of the buildings? Little kids should not be living on the main level of Main Street, I feel.
I'm going to ask one more time. My question is specifically about tents on Main Street, Virginia.
Okay. So it was my understanding that there was a homeless shelter being proposed to be on the Main Street. I don't want tents on the Main Street of Virginia, trash. I, I don't want that. I, it would be very, very bad for our city to allow that to happen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for fielding those questions, Councilor Johnson, Angela. We're going to be discussing this at length. That particular concern you have and other concerns that we have in other parts of the ordinance, under item 12, under other items concerned later on down the agenda, probably won't be for quite a while. I know you, you probably have to go and open your business, but we'll certainly be discussing your concerns at length, along with other concerns that we have and some adjustments that we may want to recommend for the ordinance. But before you go, I believe we have another council that I would make a comment. Councilor Motley, Councilor Motley?
Angie, I just want to say again, thank you for coming and voicing your concerns. We appreciate you as a business owner, taxpayer. Your concerns are being heard. I think they're 100% warranted. And then I did hear you again, and I know we talked, I think, last Tuesday, but you talked about Stillwater and Brainerd being destinations, and you want to feel safe and such, and I'm going to just reiterate again that I agree. And also, the city quietly, well, it's not quietly, because the city is slowly trying to move forward, or at least the majority of the council at this moment is trying to move forward with a destination area on the east end of Chestnut. And if that ever does come to fruition years down the road, that is going to help the downtown business district. And the intent is hopefully that more businesses will come, and anyway, just be aware that that's something happening slowly, but...
And one more thing that I do want to say is, I honestly, I have no problem, like, with the homeless shelter being in Virginia. I just don't want it on Main Street. We have two businesses that I would definitely be willing, you know, we would definitely be willing to donate food, or leftover food, to the homeless shelter, and the shampoo and conditioner. I have a big heart, I really do, for people, and I want to help people, but I just feel, like, downtown Virginia isn't the place for it. And that's my personal opinion, and I just wanted that to be noted as well.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Angela. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. You had, thank you, Angie, for coming forward and for the discussion. You had mentioned that you had collected signatures, and I was just wondering if you would maybe give those to our city clerk.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you very much, Councilor Paulson. Thank you, Angela, for coming in, and again, it's again, under item number 12 on the agenda, we'll be discussing that very issue. So thanks for coming in, appreciate it very much. If you want to give that information over, we'll take care of it for you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilor Boxer. Okay, next item, please. I see that, if I may take this one. I see that Steve Scharf from Baker Tilly regarding the 2025 general obligation bonds and other taxable general obligation tax increment bonds, Series 2025B. I, I, I see, Steve, you look more familiar, you look just like George Isletson. Anyway, welcome to the council meeting once again. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. Yes, George Isletson, Northland Securities. And I know that Steve had communicated with Britt that he unfortunately cannot attend today.
Very good.
I was going to be here, so I'm covering for Steve.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've got two items on your agenda. Under 2A and B, they're reviewing the parameters resolution for the two series of bonds that the city is considering here shortly. So just as a summary, the first bond issue is general obligation bonds. That's a street and utility project. Essentially, two projects that you're doing in that financing. 14th, 20th, and Southern Drive as one project, and the alleys as the second main project there. The, certainly, working with Steve Scharf at Baker Tilly, we at Northland Securities, certainly working a lot on structuring the debt, working with your city staff on reviewing available sources of revenue to pay back the bonds. This is a bond issue that has a preliminary structure of 20 years. Part of it's 15 years, part of it's 20 years. The assessments originally were 15 years, they've gotten, moved out to 20 years. Majority of the other components of the project are financed over 15 years. To date, you're not considering the issuance of the bonds. It's a resolution that's called a parameters resolution. This is consistent with how we've financed projects in the past with the city, where the resolution appoints what's called a pricing committee, and that's made up of the mayor, the administrator, and the finance director. And then you, the city council, within the resolution, define a couple of parameters, that the interest rate cannot exceed a certain amount, and the total principal amount of the bonds cannot exceed a certain amount as well. So, so today, Committee of the Whole is, is just reviewing the resolution, making a recommendation for the city council. And this timeline is for both of the projects that I'll be speaking about today. So first of all, again, May 20th here today, just to re, re, talk about the steps here, May 20th, the review of the parameters resolution, May 27th, your next city council meeting, that's when the city council would consider approval of the resolutions. Tentative pricing date is a little bit different than what you see in the packet. The packet talks about June 10th as a pricing date, or even just a little bit after that. We've moved that up to June 3rd, and so what we anticipate is pricing the bonds on June 3rd, getting back together with the pricing committee to lock in the interest rates and the parameters of the financings, and then June 10th, at your city council meeting, the next one after the pricing, there would be another resolution that ratifies the, the sale, if you will. So that's, that's the steps for both bonds. Again, the first project is the general obligation bond, street and utility improvements. Preliminary size of the bonds is $9,140,000. The parameters resolution has a not-to-exceed dollar amount of $9,750,000. Certainly will be, there's plenty of cushion there, council, that if, typically, when bonds are priced in the current market, if anything, they go down a little bit. So there's, we're certainly comfortable that your bonds won't exceed that $9,750,000. The second parameter is the interest rate. And so in the resolution, it talks about a not-to-exceed true interest cost of 6.5%. In the current market, we've got interest rates that are about 5.6%, so there's certainly some cushion there. Certainly, you'll get the interest rate that the market bears and not the not-to-exceed interest rate. So any questions, Mayor or council, on the first project and the parameters associated with that?
Just to clarify, under this, this, these general obligation bonds, it's, it's for the 2025, a bonds which includes the 14th Avenue, 20th Street, Southern Drive, and alleyways, and this part of the thing, and so that's where we're at with number one. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, George. Good to see you. These projects, I'm looking at page four in the packet, these projects, these are already approved projects and underway projects. Is that correct?
These are projects that you've already gone out and you have construction bids for.
Okay. So we, we need to move forward with a bond?
Correct, yes. And thank you for the question, certainly. Mayor and council, the, as, as is your history with the city, that we've taken, you do a lot of due diligence when you, you consider a project going out for bid. So you've, you've certainly been through those steps of evaluating the project, the revenue sources, the levy, et cetera. So this is, you've got construction bids in place, construction will start soon, and so it's time to get the money in place, yes.
Okay. So, and then, 20-year bond, that's what the assessments will be?
Yes.
Okay. And approximate interest is at 5.6%. That's so high. Like, in our, in the past, when we've done street projects, it's been 3.8-ish, but that's, the market currently is approximately 5.6%?
The, excuse me, so the current market is, the true interest cost, when you move the bond term out to 20 years, it does, the longer the bond term, the, the interest rate creeps up a little bit more. Based upon the current bond market, yes, the true interest cost is, for Virginia, these bonds are non-rated, so we don't have a credit enhancement to, to bring the interest rate lower. And certainly, the one other factor is that these bonds will be considered what's called non-bank qualified. So for Virginia's debt in a certain calendar year, or each calendar year, rather, a municipality can issue up to $10 million per year deemed bank-qualified. And though there's not a big spread between what's called bank-qualified, bank qualification is when a bank can get tax credits for purchasing the municipal debt, and non-bank qualified, which you, which you have here. So between this project and, and others, that you'll be anticipated to be over that $10 million.
So when you say they're non-rated and non-bank qualified, does that have to do with our bond rating?
The non, yeah, no credit rating has been applied for.
Do you know what our current bond rating is?
The current bond rating for the city is, is less than A. So it's, what we've looked at in the past is evaluating, getting the credit rating assigned and not getting it assigned. There's certainly a cost to getting the rating, and it's based upon the principal amount that you borrow.
So what you're saying is, we have more, we have too much debt on the books currently, and that's why our bond rating is less than an A?
The, and thank you for the question, Mayor and council, certainly, the, what, what is, my response to that was the economics of the bond rating itself, is that the, the rating itself on this size of a bond is between $18,000 and $20,000. So we have to do the economics of, would you benefit by getting the rating assigned? And, and the rating itself for the city, in, in recent bonds, we've reviewed that, that credit rating being assigned would not benefit the interest rate, so...
That makes sense somewhat.
Well...
It's still, so basically, you pay, you're going to pay a fee to have that assignment.
You would.
We're choosing not to pay the fee because it's more expensive, but we're, we're taking it out 20 years, which puts you in a higher interest rate bracket, and with our non-rated, non-bank qualified bond, the interest rate is higher. And if we shortened it to 15 years, what would that interest rate possibly, potentially be?
And thank you for the question. So the, a couple of ways to respond to that. The decision to move the assessments out from 15 to 20, and Britt, you can certainly address this, too, if you, if you desire, but it, it was looking at the affordability factor of, of, a little bit longer term would benefit those that are being assessed. The interest rate is a little bit higher at 20 years versus 15 years. The bonds are actually structured where a majority of the overall issuance is, is structured with 15 years. The assessment part of the bond issue, so each purpose, there's several purposes. There's the public utilities portion, there's the alleys portion, there's the assessments portion, et cetera, the state aid portion, and the utility portion. And so the only portion that is structured with a, a longer term, the assessment term, is the assessments portion, rather. So that's got a 20-year financing term, the balance is structured with 15 years. The, the one thing that I'll note is, each bond issue that we bring to the market has what's called a call date. And, and generally speaking, that's about a little bit prior to halfway through the term. So you've got a 20-year financing, and about year nine is when those bonds become callable. What that means is that you have the opportunity to refinance or prepay principal once you reach the call date. So, yes, the... So, yes, the interest rates are a little bit higher in the current bond market, but for the life, the overall 20-year term of the bonds, if interest rates do fluctuate and go lower, there'd be the opportunity to lower them and achieve a savings at that point.
Over that five-year span or period, what would we be paying in interest versus the $18,000 to have it assigned? Which would be greater?
Yes, in this case, certainly, the cities, the city would not benefit to the point of, to recover that interest, or, I'm sorry, that rating fee cost.
Okay, so, if I could ask one more time?
Yes.
What is the city of Virginia's current bond rating? And when less than A isn't, I'm sure, like, what, could you tell me specifically what that is?
Yes, the city's current bond rating is BAA2.
B what?
BAA2. It's.
BAA2, capital B, two small a's, and a 2. What is the definition of that?
The definition of a B, with the rating ladder, if you will, is there's below investment grade, you're above investment grade. So if you have BAA, and then you go up to AAA, AAA. And so the city is at BAA2, which at that point, it's, we have to look at the cost benefit, if you will. Is it better for the marketplace to bring a bond that has a rating of BAA2 versus bringing a bond issue without a rating? Many investors that purchase municipal bonds have criteria on what's the minimum rating that we can purchase. They either allow non-rated or above an A rating. So if it's assigned to BAA2, a lot of bond investors won't purchase the debt.
Got it, and I understand that. What is below BAA2?
Below the BAA category is not investment grade. And I'm not saying that the city is at that category, we're above that category.
And if we continue down the trajectory that we are with bonding and projects, will that continue to drop?
The city, I know I've had conversations with your administrator, that there's, one thing that we recommend, and I know this is a little bit off-topic, but addresses the question, is a lot of municipalities retain a firm to prepare what's called a financial management plan, kind of your roadmap for operating your city as well as managing your debt. And so that's something that the gentleman who would normally be standing here, Steve Scharf, and I have talked about, that that's something we're recommending that the city engage one of our firms to work with you on that, so.
And I guess I'm just really concerned, because if we had a better bond rating, our interest rate would be a lot lower as we do these bonds going forward, and the payment, we could have, you know, we truncated the payment 15 years then, to get that better rate if we had a better bond rating. So I would be very interested in getting information as to how we would increase our bond rating, and what steps we need to take in order to do that, as we have further future bonding projects coming up. So, thank you, George, for answering that. It still doesn't make me very comfortable going forward, but I know we have to move it since we are already into the project at this point. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. So unless there's any other comments from the council, Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, mayor. As Mr. Eilertson, you said this does relate to the alley projects that are already in progress. I will have to recuse myself, as voting could influence how much money I have to pay on my personal assessment of my property. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. We're looking for council action regarding a request to approve the resolution, which should be forwarded to the city council for final approval, the resolution to the city of Virginia regarding the issuance of general obligation bond series 2025A related to item 2A on the agenda.
Moved.
Moved to approve by counsel, Freely, there's support.
Right.
By counsel Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Same thing on item B?
Yes, mayor, thank you. Item B relates to the taxable tax increment bonds. This is the bond issue related to the tax increment financing out at the mall, so the public financial assistance to the developer, not to exceed $500,000. So this bond issue, similar timeline, recommendation to the city council at the May 27th meeting, this is recommending the parameters resolution, this is a 15-year financing, this one is taxable. So this is also a general obligation bond, but a taxable bond, ultimately because the payment is going to a private party. So the interest rate is a little bit higher because it's not tax-exempt. So the parameters within the parameters resolution are a not to exceed dollar amount of $600,000 and a true interest cost of 7.5%. Again, both comfortably above where certain levels are, or current levels are, rather. The current bond issue is estimated at $560,000, and the current interest rate over that 15-year term is 6.77%. Similar to the first bond issue, there would be a call date on these bonds, due to the smaller size of the bond, probably less likely that it would make economic sense to refinance it in the future, simply because there won't be as much principal outstanding. However, there would be that opportunity. I can address any questions that you may have, mayor and council.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Eilertson. Questions, comments, or action from the council with respect to item 2B on the agenda, which is approve the resolution to the city of Virginia regarding the issuance of taxable general obligation bonds, tax increment bond series 2025B with respect to the mall project.
I'll move the approval of the resolution.
Support.
Counselor Freely moves to approve the resolution, supported by Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Eilertson, always a pleasure.
Item number three is approve the resolution authorizing the approval of an agreement to reimburse payments in lieu of taxes with the Housing and Redevelopment Authority and in for Virginia, and an agreement regarding assessments with the Public Utilities Commission of the City.
And we have Dana Hilton from the HRA here. Please welcome Dana to the council meeting and look forward to your presentation.
Morning, mayor, council. So you'll see in here, resolution with two parts in it, the first, exhibit A, is the pilot agreement, or the payment in lieu of taxes. Per the purchase agreement, this agreement outlines how the city will reimburse the HRA for the city portion of the pilot paid on Washington Manor once we take ownership. And then the second agreement under the resolution is regarding assessments. So part of the project is that we are taking out the 0% $600,000 loan from the Virginia Public Utilities. Being that we are a public entity, we cannot have them loan that to us, just like you as a city, you can only bond or have an, we can have an assessment. So we're going through the assessment route. This assessment agreement was drafted by our bond council administration over at the PUC, has reviewed it, they do have to also approve it at the end of the month at their commission meeting.
Thank you, and this is to move forward as we get closer to the sale of Washington Manor to the HRA. Thank you. Any questions, comments, or actions by the council? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Dana, and I'm so glad all of this is gonna be able to take place and get everything fixed up. But I do have a question, Dana, on page 30 in our packet, and it would be under the, it's 1.05, and the aggregate amount of the bonds is 4.6 million dollars. I just, as we go forward in our budget planning and in our levy discussions, is there a levy associated with that 4.6 million to the Virginia, that will be applied to Virginia taxpayers?
Okay, so first, the 4.6 million is a maximum, we won't be able to take out that amount, will be just under 4 million, just for clarification. We do have money that's coming through our Virginia HRA levy already, that we are assigning to this debt. So it is the only way to be able to get enough bonding money to even come close.
So this will not become a levy?
A new levy.
A new levy, come again, you have the finances to cover that?
Correct. As long as the city council continues to approve our Virginia HRA levy, which you have in the past, and there is also language about that in the purchase agreement as well, there will be nothing new beyond our HRA levy.
Levy, perfect. Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate it. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Looking for additional questions, comments, or council action regarding the resolution? I'm sorry?
I will move the resolution.
Counselor Johnson moves to approve the resolution, is there support? Support by Counselor Beyondich? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Dana, very much.
Item number four is Mr. Matt Reed, our engineer of record from SCH, regarding a resolution for professional services agreement with SCH for the 2026 Sixth Avenue reconstruction project.
Matt Reed is always a regular here at the committee, homey and council meeting, and thanks for all your hard work moving forward and your diligence with respect to all these projects. Welcome, Matt.
Thank you, mayor, good morning. Excuse me, still got the clogged head, we're working on it. So at the last meeting, we discussed the Sixth Avenue project that was coming forward, and part of that timeline that I had outlined was some of the initial steps we were going to need to take to start getting ready for that project. And so I brought forward at this meeting, I, some of these preliminary steps include the soil boring, geotechnical work, all the typical stuff that we do on our projects, survey work, topo survey, property survey, and then getting the feasibility report together as part of the chapter 429 process, so we can, as we've been doing on our other projects with the special assessments, or at least have that as an option. And then lastly, I had included preliminary design, and I'm calling it a 30% design, that's kind of a loose figure, but basically, what I'm trying to get to is a point where we have a layout, a comfortable layout, and then we can firm up our costs a little bit more. When we get to 30%, usually we can start honing in on what those costs are actually gonna look like. We've got enough of the preliminary information, we've done enough of the background research to be able to see what the project is gonna look like, and that really allows us to, instead of looking at it from this level, we're more to here. And then, of course, as we get into final design, we try to bring that number in even closer. So that's ultimately what this agreement is for, and then, of course, once we get to that point, I'll be back and I can give you guys some updates as I'm, well, I'll give you updates as I'm going to. The other thing to keep in mind, we are going to also, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, we're gonna be televising some of the sanitaries who are possibly even storm sewer lines, we are still working on that. So we're working on, Jim's Public Works guys are getting things cleaned out and getting things ready, so we're trying to identify what we actually need to televise, and so I would imagine, maybe at the next meeting, probably two more, I'll be back with a quote from a contractor to do some of the televising work. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys may have on any of this.
I have a question before we ask for additional action. So just for clarification, this Sixth Avenue project starts at Sixth Avenue and Third Street South, and moves all the way down to, past the Lakeshore Motel?
Right up to the south side of the bridge.
Right up to the south side of that bridge.
So we'll butt right up to the bridge, we'll go to Third Street South, and then we're actually gonna take a block of Third Street North from Sixth to Fifth. They've had some issues in there with freezing sewer, freezing water. We did a water project there, oh, two, three, four months.
That's in front of Stifel Nichols?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
So that block, and then we're also going to look at, they're having, whether this ends up getting included as part of this project or not, but I know we've had a lot of issues, Jim's guys have had a lot of issues with the traffic signals at the intersections of Ninth and Ninth, and also at Sixth and Ninth. So we're rolling that in, at least now, we can always take it out later if we decide to hold out, but it's similar to the signals on Chestnut Street, where some of the parts are becoming obsolete and they're hard to keep up to date. So we may not have to necessarily replace the whole system, but we're gonna look into that and see what we need to do there to improve those, the functionality of those as well, so.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Matt, are there, as you're working towards the bridge over there, is there anticipation of any challenges when you get to the bridge with the infrastructure physically on the bridge and that kind of stuff?
I don't think so. We do actually do your bridge inspections on a regular basis, we just did one last summer, and everything checked out. So I'm not anticipating any, not gonna never say never, right? But we're not anticipating any.
I appreciate that diligence, and with that, I'll move the resolution for professional services.
Counselor Johnson moves to profession, to move to approve the professional services agreement with SCH regarding the Sixth Avenue project, reconstruction project, is there support? Or support by counsel Freely? Is there any further discussion? Hearing, Counselor Freely?
So given the volume of projects that we currently have underway, and those still to come, in addition to this, like, from the calendar perspective, I mean, are we gonna have the capacity of contractors available to meet the turning off of the steam by October of '26? You're confident?
Yeah, we'll set those stipulations in the contract, and the contractors are gonna have to meet those timelines, so, yes, we'll have.
They're currently aware of this.
Yeah, some of them are, but we'll be all right, yep.
Okay, thanks. All right, so just to clarify before we vote, this is probably going to be over a three-year period, part of '26, '27, and '28.
Yeah, as we're seeing it right now, it's, yes, mayor, it's probably gonna be major construction in '26 and '27, and then just finishing things off probably in '28, because we're gonna have to do it in two phases because the steam won't be shut off. There's some things we have to move before the steam gets shut off, and then there's other things, including removal of the steam line, that we aren't able to do until the steam line gets shut off, so we're gonna have to, we're gonna end up duplicating some things, but it's just a function of this type of a project on how we do it, so.
Yeah, difficult coordination, but needs to be done moving forward. You can see that streets are gonna separate again, as there's some temporary improvements made a few years ago by, but it just, it's this where a major sewer line runs through, is that correct, or?
Yeah, there's major storm sewer line and a major sanitary line, yep.
Very good, okay, thank you. So it has been moved to support it to move forward, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Matt.
Okay, thank you.
Item number five is the proposed facilities use agreement with Rock Ridge Youth Hockey Association.
Thank you. We have Brian Silver, our parking director. Brian, welcome.
Good morning, council, thank you, mayor. After a long process with the youth hockey, we have a facility use agreement that we are bringing before the council for your consideration and approval. This is a agreement that has already been presented to the Rock Ridge Youth Hockey Board, and they are in agreement that, as a board, they will sign this agreement. Essentially, it represents almost a doubling in the youth hockey usage fees for our facility from this past agreement to this agreement. And then in year two, there would be a 20% increase, and in year three, there would be a 10% increase. Altogether, it, in my opinion, it is a good agreement, it gets us to where the council had directed us to get to by the end of the contract, not at the beginning of the contract, just to be clear. But by the end of the contract, it gets us to more of where the council had directed us to get to. It also, this agreement allows youth hockey a few years to ramp up their fundraising capabilities and everything. Again, this agreement, just like the high school agreement that we have, is based on their usage of the facility. So for some reason, all of a sudden, hockey is not a popular sport here in northeast Minnesota, and their enrollment numbers drastically go down, their ice usage would also go down, as would their fees, and we would have to find some other way to fill the ice. I, however, in the next three years, do not see the sport of hockey taking a major downturn in our area. I see the opposite, I see their program continuing to grow. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Brian, I'll start. Thank you. Some difficult negotiations, I know, speaking with some of all the hockey users that produce hockey, they understand the need, it was a difficult negotiation.
Uh, it was a difficult negotiation. So I think we're, uh, it's a fair agreement. I think we're at where we need to be. Your doubling fees to beginning with increasing twenty percent the following year and ten percent the following year after. I think it makes sense. It's reasonable and prudent. It's incremental, and it gets to where we want to be, uh, in, in the short term, and then preparing for the long term. So I'm supportive of it. Any questions, comments, or action by the council? Council Freely?
I would thank you for the work that you've done and the reconnaissance to be able to get there. And also, I want to express my appreciation to the Youth Hockey Association for acquiescing to this sick, this proposal. Thank you.
Uh, is that in the form of a motion or not?
Move that forward.
Uh, Council Freely moves to approve the professional, uh, agreement with Rock Ridge Youth Hockey Association to be moved to the city council meeting for private approval. Is there support?
Right.
Support by Council Motley. Further discussion? Council Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, thank you for working on this. I know it was not an easy task. Um, and I appreciate some of the add-ins about the supervision of the hallways as well as the locker rooms. I think that's important for the safety of our students. Um, and again, I would echo Counselor Freely with, uh, youth hockey understanding, knowing that, um, as we move forward and able to keep the building open and profitable, at least to break even, these are all necessary changes. So thank you for your work. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Uh, Council Beyondich?
Just, just one, um, maybe more of a comment question. Um, in Article seven A, the user's maintenance, do we, we follow that, that things are checked when, um, teams leave the building, that everything is in order?
Let me refresh my memory.
Page sixty-three.
Repairs and maintenance, um. So yeah, this, um, Article seven, um, is actually in lawyer language. Um, so it's not one of the things that we have changed from the previous agreement. But yes, when we notice something that has been broken, it is our responsibility to fix it. Uh, vandalism, we do pass on the cost of those, those things to whichever user group we are able to identify as having caused vandalism.
Okay, I just want to make sure that is being addressed.
Yeah, but as far as routine things, um, such as, uh, light fixtures going bad, routine maintenance, of course, that is all our responsibility. Really, our user groups don't have much maintenance on the building that they need to provide.
Uh, thank you, Council Beyondich. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Uh, hearing seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Okay. Item number six is a request to approve the purchase of two twenty-twenty-five Chevrolet Tahos for the Sprint Medic program at a cost of fifty-three thousand, four hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-six cents each.
Now, it's my understanding, uh, Assistant Chief Jonason, that we do have these in service right now, or not, but the idea is to pay for them at this cost, but this cost is reimbursable through the state. Is that correct?
Uh, the reimbursement's correct. We have them. They did deliver them. We haven't paid for them yet. Uh, and we can't pay for them until the county approves a Sprint Medic grant. So essentially, what happens, um, being that these were state bid vehicles, I had to order them last year. They arrived about a month and a half ago. Um, due to some unforeseen paperwork issues, our grant didn't get turned in on time, so it's running about four months behind. Grant's been turned in. Uh, it's been approved at the Office of EMS. It's going to be, uh, it is on the docket for the county commission meeting on the twenty-seventh. Once they accept the grant, uh, the encumbered money will be released. I can pay for these vehicles. Um, so essentially, the city is just acting as a pass-through. I'll fill out the application for reimbursement. City of Virginia gets its money back, and Ranger Chevrolet gets its money for the two Tahos.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Comments? Action? Council Motley? I'm sorry, Council Johnson?
I was going to move the, um, purchases for discussion.
The Council, uh, Johnson moves, support by Council, uh, Motley for further discussion. Further discussion, Council Motley.
Do you foresee the money not coming through and the city of Virginia being stuck with the bill? Is that a possibility?
No, because we're not going to pay, we won't actually, I won't write the P O's until the county approves or accepting the grant. And once the county accepts the grant, the money is already encumbered at the state level. It's just waiting for that last formality.
Okay, cool.
So I don't foresee any, uh, circumstance that the city would be left hanging for this money.
And it's, it's not the approval of, of, of the money, it's the acceptance of the grant that's already been allocated to prove. They just need to do a formal approval at the county level.
That's good. And then one more question, not to, sorry to put you on the spot on this one, but, um, I noticed, and I'm not trying to pick on you, but, um, the purchases from Hibbing, um, how come we didn't go in Virginia with the purchases?
Uh, because Ranger Chevrolet is the state of Minnesota bid. They own the bid. So for Tahos, to get the state bid price, it has to be through the Ranger Chev and Hibbing.
Gotcha.
There's no dealerships in our city that have state bid pricing.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. It has been moved and supported. Further discussion? Council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. One quick question I have is, um, have these already been paid for? And then we're reimbursing. You had mentioned reimbursing the city.
No, they have not been paid for. Um, I spoke with Dylan Ferguson, the Office of EMS Director, and asked if we could pay for them ahead of time. He said, no. Um, the city will not be able to be reimbursed until the Saint, until Saint Louis County accepts the grant. They're the actual designees of the grant. City of Virginia is a sub-grantee. Um, so through a few emails with Ranger Chev, I explained why we haven't paid for them yet, and so far, they've been patient with us.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, no money has been sent out from, um, City of Virginia budget for these vehicles.
And they're okay waiting until the process happens?
I think so.
Okay.
They're not too happy with us, but they understand the situation.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you.
The honor and is on the other end. So it has been moved and supported. Uh, is there any further discussion? Uh, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate, thanks, Chief.
Item number seven is to discuss the approval for this council administrative staff to attend the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference and the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Conference.
Okay, I think that this is, uh, was carried over from the previous meeting to do this. Uh, I know there were some questions and concerns about that. Uh, there was a lot of discussion about, uh, moving, uh, uh, one allocation over to another. I do believe that it's important that we send somebody down to the League of Minnesota Cities Conference. If it is the council's, uh, recommendation that we not send everywhere, everybody to go, that we select a counselor and, and give the city administrator an opportunity to prefer or whatever staff members to go. That's my suggestion moving forward. Looking for additional questions, comments, concerns? Council Johnson?
Thank you. First of all, Pam, I'd like to thank you for your comments at the last city council meeting. Um, it's very helpful, and it's good to have a, a different perspective. Um, in the eight-plus years I have been on the council, never has all seven individuals from this council attended, um, a, a schedule, um, quite the opposite. Usually, it's one or two counselors. Um, I think the best attended one we had was the last one in Duluth where, um, five of us went. Um, there are enough opportunities for folks that if we all go, we would, not, not one of us would attend the same session. There are multiple sessions on multiple things. Um, and the conference being in Duluth, it's, well, it, in theory, it's great to drive back and forth three days. Uh, you miss some of the other stuff that happens. The, the networking, the ability to sit and visit with folks from other places. Um, the conference is an educational conference. Um, many, many workplaces require and request that you attend. Um, not allowing city counselors or staff to attend the state's premier event when it comes to networking and education for government, um, to me is almost irresponsible. It's been tossed around that if you want to go, you can go by yourself. Um, I'd love to be able to afford this, but I can't. Um, I am not, um, in a position that allows me to, um, just go for, and I'll, I'll, uh, intents and purposes for work. Um, I, I think that attending the League of Minnesota Conference demonstrates that our city and our government is invested in the future. It is invested in the community locally as well as statewide. If, if we ever got to a point where everybody wanted to go, and it was, we were sending ten or twelve people, then I can understand having some discussion. But to arbitrarily just say one person gets to go, um, limits what we can do and what we can accomplish at this conference. The last one we had in Duluth, if I remember right, we were able to conquer and divide, and we all came back, and we did have discussions about what we learned and how does that carry forward. Um, same way with, uh, the League of, our, um, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. Some of it is similar, but it is considerably different simply because of the atmosphere and what's happening. Um, I think it is, it is one of the privileges of being an elected official to be able to utilize this. It is a good use of taxpayer dollars, in my opinion. I would also like to comment, as the mayor alluded to, that, um, Counselor Bachschnider said that she doesn't take any city insurance. I only, I, I pay for half of mine. There's a good, I, in my rough estimate, forty thousand dollars a year that can be reallocated from a budget that was set to a budget that was, is real, which is what budgets are, um, to transfer some of that money over to be utilized in order to provide opportunities for growth and connection for city staff that will do, will only serve to improve how we govern and who we govern with. So, um, I think it is prudent that we allow folks that want to go to be able to utilize these, um, opportunities. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Council Johnson. Uh, there is money in the budget, uh, that was allocated in two thousand twenty-five for that. Uh, we have a budget. We're going to start the twenty-twenty-six budget, uh, meeting's there. There's a lot of discussion about how we can make some adjustments in that regard. We do pay a significant amount of money and dues both to the League of Minnesota Cities and the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, which is also budgeted moving forward. So that being said, we'll start with the rest of the council first, Council, uh, Paulson, and then over to Council Beyondich. Council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so one thing that I feel like we discussed last time is whether it was a required. Um, and although they're not required, um, I think our city clerk alluded how, that, I bet they can be valuable to all of us, I believe, but they're not required. The only requirement, I believe, is for new council members or new newly elected officials. Isn't that correct? Mayor?
Pam?
In January or February, they offer the new counselor or, um, previous council training, which it's not required, but you can attend, and it's always beneficial, and I recommend that everyone at least go to that.
So that, and, so these are the summer conferences here?
And these are the summer conferences.
Okay, and then, um, I just was going online on, um, the League of Minnesota Cities. I believe a lot of these are on, um, their YouTube, and then, or you can go to the league. I think you can actually watch the breakout sessions online. So I'd like to understand if there's anything, that would be beneficial anyway. Um, even if members didn't attend or couldn't attend, that we could then have access to the information that was discussed at some of those breakout sessions, whether it be the, um, greater, the city of, whatever it is called, G, CGMC. Um, yeah, I feel like that would be a complete benefit to all of us if there is video archived, uh, information from any of the conferences, um, if council members or the mayor does not attend. And the thought that I have is possibly having the city pay for registration, but have the council member pay for their own travel and, uh, hotel expense. Then there is no, necessarily a huge out-of-pocket, and anyone could attend if they so choose, uh, with the city paying the registration fee. And I don't know how everyone feels about that. Um, but I do know that a few times, um, in, when I did attend some of these, their cities, their communities did not cover their hotel expenses. They just covered the registration expense. So maybe if we want to look at that, that could be an option or, or a compromise. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And before we go to Council Beyondich, you know, there is a, there is a, uh, a significant factor with respect to the ability to network. I, I get that. I understand that. Um, intending many of these other conferences, and many of them, uh, on my own, because I have the ability to, you know, to make that adjustment from, but they're, not all councils have that opportunity to do so. So if we're going to send somebody, just send them. Uh, it's, it's, uh, we have an obligation. It's, it's fortunate it's in Duluth this year, so we have an option. Uh, you don't have to say, they don't know if you don't want to. I think Counselor Freely and I went to the last one down in Duluth, and we both committed back and forth. Uh, still had the ability to network a little bit, but I understand the, the significance and importance of being able to network in that regard. So, um, uh, you know, we saved on the hotel room. We, we paid for the registration. We didn't put in for any of our meals. That was a choice that we made, so that's a choice that the councils have. But I think the option to attend, uh, should be, uh, 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 the focus of our attention today. Uh, Council Beyondich?
Thank you. And actually, I, I'm okay with this. Um, I will not be able to attend. But the last one we attended in Duluth, there were several of us that went, and there were many breakout sessions. And you're right, none of us went to the same breakout session. I think it was beneficial. We met in the morning and decided which ones we were going to attend, and everybody did their own thing. We went to the sessions. Um, nobody overlapped. And at the end of the day, we were able to sit down and discuss everything that we had learned. Um, so I'm actually okay with this, um, because it's in the budget for this year. That, um, I, I myself personally found it beneficial to network with other communities and see how they do things. So I'm, I'm actually okay with it. And the one thing that I would like is when, when everybody comes back, or those who go, to give a report on what sessions they attended and what benefits came out of that. But I'm okay with, with people attending this. I found it very, um, beneficial, and we were able to sit down and talk and meet, meet people from other communities and learn how they do things. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Council Bachschnider?
Uh, thank you. I believe at the last meeting, Britt, you said the budget for the city council to attend trainings was two thousand five hundred dollars, and five hundred dollars has been spent out of that so far. So we have about two thousand dollars to play with. Now, this is just talking for the, the elected officials, not city staff. So I would propose that, uh, any counselor can go to either conference as long as that does not exceed two thousand dollars, uh, in registration and travel expenses, including hotels. Um, once we meet that two thousand dollars that we still have within our budget, then it's, make it first come, first served between the counselors and elected officials. Um, but with that proposal, I would assume, Britt, that if you were to attend the conference or Pam would attend the conference, that's a separate budget line for us. Is that correct? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Um, so that's what I would propose, as long as we keep it within the two thousand dollars that we have left within the budget, then counselors or the mayor could go.
Yeah, thank you. Now, uh, if this, uh, as we move forward, if, uh, hold in abeyance, Council Johnson, just for a moment, thank you. If this moves forward and, uh, you know, and, and that proposal that you made, uh, is, is made in the form of a motion and it passes, I just want to say that if, if it exceeds that amount, I will acquiesce, not go. I've been to many of these conferences. I get to go to the mayor's association meetings, not at the city's expense. I, I do that myself, but I, I learn a lot. The League of Minnesota Cities is there, so I could benefit in other ways from that. So I would acquiesce to that, so I, I would, that would free up some of the, uh, the funds that are available in the two thousand twenty-five budget moving forward. Uh, Council Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't like the idea of first come, first served, and let's fight to the death to see who gets to go. A budget is meant to be, um, meant to change. It's meant to move money around. And again, I will say that we have budgeted, I believe Sherry budgets every year as if every counselor and the mayor took full, um, family insurance coverage. Um, as, as a responsible budgeting happens, uh, you budget for the worst and hope for the best. Um, I see zero reason why we can't transfer a couple thousand dollars from what has been budgeted for insurance and put that over so that any counselor who wants to have this opportunity would have the ability to do so. Um, and with that, I will make a motion that any counselor or staff that fits the description, that would like to attend either or both of these conferences be allowed to do so, with the city covering based on. the city covering based on unused budget funds from other areas.
Okay. Well, Councilor Johnson has already made the motion. Before I ask for a second, if that's, if that's a protocol, Pam has a comment. Can I do that before we get a second on that motion? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just was looking at the budget, and for 2025, we have travel expense budgeted of 2,500 and registration and education fees of 2,500, so there's a total of 5,000.
Okay, thank you.
For the year.
Thank you very much.
Support.
It's moved by Councilor Johnson, supported by Councilor Freely, to allow any counselor or city staff member to attend either or both the Coalition of Greater Minnesota's meeting and the League of Minnesota Cities meeting that's held in Duluth. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Bachschnider?
Thank you. Pam, knowing that we have about $5,000 budgeted, let's save $500 out, so 4,500. Do we expect this to exceed the $4,500 left within the budget?
Councilor Bachschnider, right now, there's 2,191 in, left in the travel, which if you stayed in Duluth, rooms start at 150 tax, so probably 180 a night, which would be probably two nights, depending on when you attended, and then first time registration was 275. Any other registration, if you've already attended, is 425. So that would come out of the other budget, and I guess the CGMC, I'm not quite sure what that one, that's 175. So we should be fine within the budgets that have been set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bachschnider. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Motley?
Thank you, Mayor. I work for a living, so I will be unable to attend this, so you can cross me out as one less person. Thank you.
So, thank you. We have the budget, it's been clarified, there's just money available to do that. It has been moved and supported to allow any city councilor or the mayor and some city staff to attend both the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Meeting and the League of Minnesota Cities Meeting. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item number eight is approve the resolution to hire the maintenance custodial worker for the Virginia Public Library.
So moved.
A move to approve by Councilor Johnson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Bachschnider, further discussion? Just some clarity here, if that individual needs to be utilized in some other capacity within the city of Virginia, they're allowed to do that?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Number nine is approve the renewal of the miscellaneous lease of Minnesota DNR Land and Minerals.
This is something we do on an annual basis.
So moved.
A move to approve by Councilor Johnson, is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Number 10 is a request that came from Councilor Johnson to discuss the potential implementation of a landfill host fee as per Minnesota statute 115A.921.
Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. It was brought to my attention, month and a half or two months ago, that because the, there is a solid waste facility within our city limits, we have the ability to charge a fee for that. And seeing as how the county is generating a lot of revenue, a lot of it being from ours specifically, I think it's only fair that we look into, into utilizing our authority and to figure out how to see how we can help maintain and bring some additional revenue into the city for solid waste and other opportunities. So I had asked that this be looked up and have it being discussed to see if it's something we're interested in and something that we can take advantage of.
Yeah, thank you. I think this votes for additional discussion with respect to that and doing some GLEG work and some, my concern is, real quick, is the fact that the county operates a landfill, obviously, and it's within the city limits of Virginia, we have a statutory authority to do some things. I have a concern about the fact that WLSSD, which is in Duluth, there's solid waste, there's garbage in Duluth, was using a Superior Wisconsin facility in which to dump their waste product. Well, that's, that's, city landfill in Superior has come to full capacity. Now the county wants to move and contract allowing that product to be brought up to our landfill, and which would significantly reduce the lifespan of our landfill until such time as the new landfill proposal moving forward down in Canyon takes effect. So I'm concerned about that. I think we have to have a conversation in, in addition to the request, we're on our statutory obligation with St. Louis County, how that's going to affect the lifespan and how, what kind of fees does WSD pay to the landfill for that purpose? And if they're paying the county fee, we should be, we should be getting a part of that as well because it's within the city of Virginia. So let's look at the statutory authority and add that as part of our conversation as well. So thank you for bringing that up, Councilor Johnson. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. In our packet, it, as I was reading, it seems like it's a, when they voted on this, Commissioner Nelson along with Dave Fink, who I think piloted, really worked hard on this, and it's a big deal. So I think it's, it's a significant accomplishment, but I feel like we probably should have a discussion regarding, because the landfill is going to have so much more usage now, that we should really have the conversation, what does that look like? And Brian, I don't know if you could, if there's any similar contracts out there with other counties that utilize a city or municipalities' resources, what that, what those fees or what that contract might look like? And I feel like we already have the contract, maybe we just need to look at the fees. And then the, I know our water discussion with the lease for, for the Minnesota DNR Land and Minerals was just previous to this, but when you look at where the, our water source is, and part of the contention, if you read through the packet of some of the commissioners, I think down in, it was some of the Duluth commissioners that had concerns regarding environmental protections with, regarding water, and it was running into Lake Superior. So as we take on more dumpage in our landfill, how or would that impact or affect our drinking water source, which is directly across the pit from there? And I just, I don't know if that's been addressed. I'm sure they've had discussions about it, but it's, it's pretty close.
Yeah, and there is a monitoring aspect of it with St. Louis County, from my, from my understanding, and there is a parameters, there's a, a curtilage or there's a certain area which they can't exceed their, the landfill footprint, so to speak. And so my concern is, is if, if that landfill footprint stays the way it is, we're going to have to get a permit to expand that, which we would likely be opposed to. But then you have this entire facility, if, if WSD is dumping a significant amount of refuse in our facility, that reduces our lifespan, and we should not in any way, shape or form talk about or support any type of expansion to that facility. So if they're going to do this, and hopefully it's temporarily, and transferring the new landfill facility down to Canyon, and if we don't have that landfill in Virginia, our refuge trucks will have to be driving to Canyon to, and that's going to cost, be a cost to us as well. So looking at a fee moving forward, putting that in our solid waste enterprise fund is only prudent for us to look ahead for the future and what that holds for us. So I think we have to be opposed to that and be cognizant of the aquifer issue that we have.
And I, I guess what I would also maybe suggest is, as we have these conversations, that if there are any impact studies that are required to be taken, that the, maybe they would be paying part of that fee if we're concerned about any additional landfill usage, and that might impact, I don't think it would, but maybe we would just look at any impact studies would, would have a shared fee associated with them at that point. Thank you.
Yeah, regardless of what we do, we have to ensure the integrity of our aquifer, so, and drinking water system. Councilor Johnson?
I would move that we direct city, appropriate city staff to move forward with investigating and providing a proposal for these fees for the county.
Councilor Johnson makes that motion. Did you get that, Pam? Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Bachschnider. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item number 11 is a request to approve the resolution for the 2026 street striping maintenance program with St. Louis County.
To approve?
Councilor Paulson moves to approve. Item number 11, approve the resolution for the 2026 street striping maintenance program with St. Louis County, is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Motley, is there any further discussion? Councilor Paulson?
I just have one item, and I think I've addressed this every year, is just to make sure that they notify business owners of when that's going to occur, and when it is going to occur on, I would say Chestnut or Second or any parking that will be affected, that it would be prior to the opening of business. I think it was two years ago, they did it at three o'clock, and a lot of cars got sandblasted, literally. So if we could address that, thank you.
Okay, moved and supported. Thank you, Councilor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Before we move to other items, I'm concerned, does anyone need to take a quick five-minute break? Are we good to go, moving forward? Let's take, just, just take five minutes, and then we'll start on the, because it's going to be significant discussion on this planning and zoning. Thank you. We'll just take a quick five-minute break. decision on this planning and zoning. Thank you. We'll just take a quick five-minute break. Okay, we ready to go back? Let's have a seat and just continue on. Okay, thank you, Britt. Next item, please.
Item number 12, review the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations for zoning ordinance amendments.
What?
Our secretary. We need to wait for our clerk.
All right, we need her. So, hang on in the wheat patcher. Okay, I think we'll get Pam get when you're ready. Pam, let me know. You're ready? Okay, Britt, item number 12.
Item number 12, review the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations for zoning ordinance amendments. This comes back to us from the council meeting last week.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, again, I'm fine with the definitions. So, Brian, I don't know if we want to address this once again, the different sections. So, if you're, if we want, can we vote on one section and then the other, or how would you recommend us moving forward?
Brian?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So, the answer is that technically they're different sections of the ordinance, so they could be modified or altered separately, keeping in mind that they have to be internally consistent. So, as long as we make sure that they are consistent with each other, we could take each as a separate item.
Okay.
That help?
Yep. So, then I would like to go to the chart found on page 114, 15, 16, and 17. And upon reviewing the, on page 118, the actual establishment of the districts, what the definitions of the established districts mean and represent, I am not comfortable with any changes to the current chart. So, I would move that we remain, I don't know, Brian, if you could help me craft this, I would like the chart just to remain, to revert to its original form. So, no, no changes to this, no amended or no changes to the actual chart portion, one, which is 11.13 district regulations. So, I would move that. No changes. So, tell me how to. But what I'm more specifically saying is I want to keep the chart the way it is, not rejecting so it could go back and have more discussion. Not, I'm fine with discussion, but what I'm saying is I feel the status quo is reasonable according to the establishment of district definitions on page 118. That chart mirrors what the definitions currently are on the books that we have. Okay, I would move no change to the chart.
Okay. And you wanted to allude to the certain page number here?
It would, excuse me, Mayor, it would be starting on page 114, 115, 116, 117, and then the definitions are on 118. And what I am proposing is because those definitions on page 118 specifically state the establishment of those districts, and they do state the criteria developed for each of those districts already in the definitions. So, when you read that, there should be no change to the chart. If you change the chart, you have to change the definition. So, what I would like to propose, and what I'm moving, is that we keep the chart as it is, no changes, not, no changes as of what it is currently on the books.
Okay, thank you. Is that motion, got that motion, Pam? Go ahead and read it.
Okay, moved by Counselor Paulson. We do not have a second, and you're recommending to change, no change to the chart 11.13 district regulations.
As it currently, no, as it currently is already on our books.
No change refers back to what's currently on our books?
No, it would be changing all of these back to their, to the original.
Right. Yes, that's the intent, yes.
So, whatever that, that's why I was asking for the crafting of the word.
So, it'd just be no change on the recommendation to change them to the red. You're leaving it as it is.
Mm-hmm, leaving it as is. Correct.
Okay, we got that motion?
Yes.
So, motion by Counselor Paulson. Is there support?
Support for discussion.
Yeah, support by Counselor Freely for discussion. Further discussion, Counselor Freely.
Thank you. My question then would, to turn to Jen, like, by doing so, how would that impact the vision that has been proposed for further and future development on the changes that were recommended when it was first presented?
Jenny?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Freely. It would just revert back to what we currently have, so there would be no changes at all really to the current, like Counselor Paulson said, status quo. Planning and zoning was looking to, at other options and opportunities for housing, and this was one way that they were proposing to do that. There may be other things in ordinance that we can look at to help move that forward as well, which would also come in front of council. But if this is not changed, it would just be as it is today currently, so.
Guess what I'm saying is that, are we reverting back to the drawing board in terms of what our vision was, in terms of how we would be able to permit accordingly for further development in the city that we hadn't seen done in the past?
Jenny?
Thank you, Mayor. I would say it wouldn't be going to the drawing board again. It would be, other items could be considered that were included in either the zoning audit or other recommendations. This just really, and maybe it would spur some other conversations on mixed use development versus allowing, you know, changes to the chart within the business district or the residential district. So, there's different opportunities we can still look at, if that's the way that the Planning and Zoning Commission would want to go, and if that's what the council ultimately wanted to see as well. Does that help answer?
Yeah. And I guess, like, so Counselor Paulson, sometimes it's like, we, we, we aren't involved in the conversations from planning and zoning. That's what I'm, you know, that was brought forth after you guys determined what, why you were going to bring this forth to us. And I guess, we aren't involved in those conversations until we're just provided with a change in the charts. That's, that's what I struggle with somewhat. You would have had conversations that were, I would think, moving us forward in terms of like a vision of development in the city, some of which would be potentially controversial as we heard. But reverting back to the old, without just excluding that one concern, is that appropriate and necessary?
Jenny?
Thank you, Mayor. We can always continue the conversations on changing the district chart with planning and zoning in different ways other than just this, and move something like that forward. I will say that all of councils, you know, always welcome to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. Counselor Beyondich is our liaison. I know Counselor Bachsneider's been attended a few, and as have you, Counselor Freely. So, those meetings are always open to the public, and we did have that zoning audit that was presented to council, which is where some of this work stemmed from. Not all of it, because there had been previous work for many, many years on updating the zoning ordinance, and that work is still continuing and will still be brought forward to council from planning and zoning.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to Counselor Johnson, if you may, aye. There's some of things in the charts that I have no problem with, but there's others that I do. And back in 2017, when we first established the Property Preservation and Maintenance Code, there were some suggestions that were brought forth, it was to go to planning and zoning and others. And one of them was, for me, was a concern about the amount of rental properties that we currently have in Virginia and the zoning of those rental properties. So, my suggestion was, and I never got a legal opinion about that, but it's zoning issue with respect to multi-dwellings. So, say, for example, somebody has a large house, and they decide they want to downsize their moving, so they sell their house, say, let's just say for an extreme example on Fifth Avenue. And, and if some individual buys that property and turns that from a single-family home into a four, or five, or six-plex rental property, that increases the rental property, reduces the single-family dwellings we have here. And what's a concern about that is how much rental property we have in Virginia as opposed to find that balance. So, I'm concerned about some of the things that are on this chart, and I would like to have some further discussion about the chart as it currently is being proposed. So, by going back to the original one, I think it, for me, it bodes well for additional discussion of some of the areas that are established in this proposed chart. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that I've been processing as I've been listening to the conversations is, it feels like it's being alluded to that if we change the chart, people can do whatever they want, wherever they want, and there's going to be bodies everywhere. And, and that's not what's happening, in my opinion. We are changing the process to allow for the Buildings and Grounds Committee to make decisions based on what's here, instead of continually have to guess or do conditional permits. We, we, we have four options, Jenny, and if I'm off at all, would you please correct me? We have, basically, we have four options. Somebody can come in and get a permit that's already been approved by a council. When they meet the standards of the permit, they're good to go and everything, they're tracked and followed to make sure everything's up to standard. So, that's one option. An individual or a company can come in and get a conditional use permit, which means we've already set some parameters to be able to change or allow for certain things in certain spots within the community. And again, once they get that conditional use permit, it's still monitored, and there are things done to make sure it fits what our vision is overall for that space. The other option is a variance. So, how does a, question, how does a various, variance fit in based on a permit or a conditional use permit?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Johnson. So, it's a good question about the difference between variances and conditional use permits. Conditional use permits, like you said, are allowed with conditions. So, there's set parameters that have some sort of nexus to whatever the proposal is that can be set to accommodate that use. Use variances are not allowed. Variances are dimensional in nature, so if it's a setback, if it's a height, if it's a lock coverage, those are the types of things that can be allowed through variance. But a use variance is not allowed. So, if something's not allowed as a conditional use, you can't apply for a variance for that.
Okay, thank you. And then the fourth option, obviously, is no, you can't, like, just plain out. And, and I think, and if I remember right, one of the things that you had mentioned is as investors and developers are coming into our community, if there's not an opportunity to get a conditional use permit, they may not even just look at our community. They will just skip right over it because of the ability for things to change. So, changing things to permitted means that they have the ability to come in knowing that if they do everything right and they follow our rules, they can get the permit to move forward with development or redevelopment.
Thank you, Mayor. That's, that's some discussion that has been had, that things that I've heard. I mean, whether I can say we're losing out on development because of that, that's unknown.
Right.
But because people can go and look and see what types of uses are allowed by, by right and/or by conditional use, there oftentimes are developers who don't want to go through the conditional use process. They don't want to go through the variance process. So, they choose either other locations where it's allowed as a permitted use, so that they don't have to go through what some consider those extra hoops.
Okay. And then, I guess, my final thing is, as the person who's been through this process since we hired you, you've been at literally all the meetings, you've listened to all of us, how do you see this playing out? Like, from your, your stance as a person we've tasked with developing our community, both residential and business, how does this play out? If you could just give some feedback on your recommendations and that process, please.
Jenny?
Thank you, Mayor. So, planning and zoning has taken a lot of this into consideration. I think that the comments that have been received through this process is what, you know, what we're looking for, so that we can have further discussions about what works, what might not work. We will look at other options and opportunities to help spur development throughout the city, whether that's residential or commercial or both. If council chooses not to approve this, then we'll just have to look at other opportunities to expand those options and then bring those forward to you as well. I do believe that planning and zoning might want another chance at the chart, and that could come forward to you at some point as well. Maybe it's a modification of some of the things that were proposed. But I do know that they want to continue the conversation in any way possible, as do I, in opening up different alternatives and options for any type of development within the city. And maybe that means with different parameters or different performance standards for certain situations.
Thank you. And I think that's kind of where I was going. I'm not comfortable with that, just absolutely not. I think that because of all the work that you and our appointed commission have put in, now that they have feedback from us, they have feedback from some of the community members, I think that it's more prudent to send it back and have them look at those specific points and, and bring back a compromise. I just don't want this to get lost and put on the back burner or to start all over again. I think those are challenges that could frustrate individuals. I think the conversation should continue. I've thought a lot about the concern of people living on the first floor on Chestnut Street versus upstairs. And I understand and validate that first-floor living on Chestnut Street may not be what we want, but I also don't see it as the linchpin for the entire downtown falling into a huge state of repair and people moving out. I think that's, that's a stretch at best. In my world, I wouldn't mind people living in, buying a building and living on the main street on level because curtains happen, because remodeling happens, because a lot of things. There is an apartment building on First Street South towards 100 block that an individual spent many years remodeling, and it's the nicest building, including the business, on that street. It's beautiful, there's flowers outside, and it's, it's just an amazing place. So, the right person with the right activity, right ability could make a storefront a beautiful homefront. So, I'm just not encouraging that, but I think that just saying absolutely not for anybody ever is a little short-sighted. But I think that we need to give the opportunity for people to figure out what they want to do downtown. If they want to buy a building and they want to invest in our community, how best do we support that? And as for people living upstairs, it's already going on. There's so many beautiful apartments downtown that could be rented out at, at market rate if they had the ability to clean them up, which, again, there, we have a business downtown now that has three storefronts, has renovated an upstairs apartment. It's, it's the keystone of what we want to have happen on Chestnut Street, and they have done a phenomenal job of both investing their personal finances as well as utilizing grant programming and funding through the city and the county and other folks. So, I would be much more comfortable sending this back to planning and zoning and having them have discussions, and then definitely having individuals who have those concerns either submit in writing, email, or attend, so they, that the planning and zoning professionals that know this can address those individually and come up with a compromise that is suitable for, for our future, looking five, 10, 50 years down the road on how do we want our city to look. I think that the word, some of the wording changes are great. I've skimmed this, I've looked at especially the red lines. I've skimmed this, I've looked at especially the red line stuff, that's what changes, and I think they've done a good job to modernize this. So Pam, there is a motion and support on the floor, correct? I will not be supporting just reverting back to the original. I think that that does not provide an opportunity for our Planning and Zoning Commission to hear us and to have more discussion on it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Before we go to Counselor Paulson and Counselor Beyondich, I just want to give two examples. And there are many others of concern to me. How that moves forward, how it reverts back is yet to be determined by this elected body. But an example is that I believe, this is my personal perspective and seeing what other communities do, touring some places, like the places by St. Cloud in other states where they have this combination of housing and businesses in their communities. Now, we always have, we continue to allow, residenzials upstairs of a business. That's always been the case, that's not going to be changed. I don't think that's going to be an issue, that's not something that we're considering as long as you have a business downstairs. And I looked at buying a business on the main street, talked to Jenny about it, wasn't allowed to do that because I can't live downstairs. I have to have a business. I could live upstairs, but the business I went up by didn't have an upstairs. So I understood that, that's, you know. But I do think that by allowing to buy buildings downtown or renting it in the lower level, I think it does have the potential or maybe even the propensity to erode some of the business climate downtown. And I think it would discourage anybody to have a business. So the less business you have, the more residential properties you have, the less people are going to come down shopping to support one another's business as you're moving forward. So that's a concern I'd like to have additional discussion about. And the other is, you know, the permitting, the conversion of single-family homes to no more than four units. I mean, how, I mean, how much rental properties do we have to have? I understand we need housing, I get that, that's for further discussion, but to convert a single-family home into rental properties, how many more rental properties do we have to have in Virginia? I'm not saying there's going to be an influx of that, but it can increase over time. So those are just a couple of things that I have. There are many others along in this district regulation regarding permit that needs to be considered. I would like answered, questions answered. And I would really say, and as Counselor Johnson indicated, you can submit in writing to planning and zoning, but once this comes into being, I think, you know, we're discussing that, it can be the whole level. We discussed it in some minor presentations previously, but the city needs to be informed. Not everybody can come to these meetings, nominated, not everybody can write a letter and comment. If we're going to do this, these are substantial changes, substantial changes that we need for the general public to comment on and in one group, whether it be a setting where we set up a meeting, say, come in, here's a regulation, what do you have problems with? Those kind of things. But that's for us to decide later down the road. So that being said, I'll acquiesce to Counselor Paulson, then we'll go over to Counselor Beyondich. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So the reason that I'm in support and in favor of keeping the chart status quo, if we go onto page 114, let's actually explore the chart. So the first red line would be under Buildings Combined Residential and Non-Residential Uses, and it's been conditionally permitted from R2 through R5 and never permitted in R1. So if we read the definition of R1, the definition of R1 says Single Family Residential District. Purpose: The purpose of R1's Single Family District is to provide for low-density, single-family, detached residential dwelling units and directly-related complementary uses. So I am of the opinion that it should not be permitted in R1 according to the R1 definition, which is when you purchase a home in a neighborhood, you have that reasonable expectation to reside in a single-family district that's provided a low-density, single-family, detached residential dwelling situation. So I would not be in favor of that. I would be fine with it reverting to conditional on R2 through R5. That's why I say reverting, keeping it conditional, it can go through the process. Go down to the next change, which is the conversion of single-family dwelling to no more than four units, which, under the proposed changes, which I am proposing no changes, but under the proposed changes under R1 and R2, it would be a permitted use. Again, if we read the definition of Single Family Residential District and the purpose, by allowing this defeats the definition and the purpose that is outlined by the Establishment of Districts in the 11.10 definition. So I would be comfortable leaving that status quo under non-permitted use on R1 and R2 and permitted use R3, R4, and R5. And if we go to the R3, R4, and R5 definitions, R3 definition is 5 to 12 multifamily residential district. What is the purpose? The purpose of R3 Family Residential District is to provide for 5 to 12 multi-residential dwelling units and directly-related complementary uses. What is R4? R4 is a townhouse district. What is the purpose? The purpose of the R4 Residential District is to provide for townhouses or one- and two-unit dwellings. R5 is multifamily over 12 units residential district. Purpose: The purpose of R5 Residential District is to provide for multifamily structures over 12 units and directly-related complementary uses. So these, all the R1 through R5 have their own specific definitions. What this chart is proposing is to allow permitted use when it defies the actual definition that we have on the books. So that's why I am proposing no changes. If we move down again, this chart would allow, if we go down the chart on the red line, multifamily over 12 units. This chart would allow multifamily over 12 units under R1 Residential 1 or Residential 2 a conditional use permit. I do not agree with this. Multifamily over 12 units, 5 to 12 unit multifamily and dwelling, conditional use permits in R1 and R2. I do not agree with this. Moving down the chart for changes, under townhomes, page, I'm not sure what the page is, but under townhomes, they have a conditional permitted use in R3, and the recommended change is for permitted use. If you read, R4 is the actual zone for townhomes. So there actually is a specific zone for townhomes. So I would not be in agreement with that change. Then moving down to commercial PUD, and the definition of PUD is a Planned Unit Development District. What is the purpose? The purpose of the PUD, Planned Unit Development District, is to provide for the grouping of land parcels for development as an integrated coordinated unit as opposed to a traditional parcel-by-parcel, piecemeal, sporadic, and unplanned approaches to development. This district is intended to introduce flexibility of site design and architecture for the conservation of land and open space through clustering of buildings and activities through conditional use provisions. It is further intended that planned unit developments are to be characterized by central management, integrated planning and architecture, joint or common use of parking, maintenance of open space, and other similar facilities, and a harmonious selection and efficient distribution of uses. Mobile Home Park and Manufactured Housing PUD Districts. The purpose for Mobile Home Park and Manufactured Housing PUD District is to provide for mobile homes and directly-related uses and to provide for manufactured housing as a planned unit development. Then there's also Mining Open Space District. Now, when we're talking about commercial PUD being allowed in Business 1 and Business 2 as a permitted use before, previously, it was a conditional use, you are saying that under this Planned Unit Development definition, we are allowing that to happen in those two zones. I am not in agreement with that. So again, the chart, in my opinion, should stay status quo. The final, and I apologize I'm taking so much time, but I feel it's important that the definitions are understood and why my motion is on the floor for consideration to remain status quo because the changes in the chart fundamentally overhaul and change not only residential but business zones, zoning districts in the city of Virginia. Multifamily housing, if we go to, what page is that? Page 116, under B1 and B2, this is what was addressed and with over 30, how many signatures, Pam, was stated, were received from the business owner that collected them? Okay, so 30 signatures were collected in just a few short days, not in favor of this change whatsoever. I'm not sure what it reads like, but they're not in favor, is that correct?
Yeah, oh, okay. What it says is here, "Petition of Opposition to一件9.1T on Virginia Council Agenda for 5/13, the Virginia City Council is considering an amendment to the zoning ordinance of Chapter 11, Chapter 11.02 and 11.3. These changes would allow residential living in zones B1 and B2 that include residential living on the main level of Chestnut Street and allow businesses to locate within residential zones R1 through R5. See attached zoning changes," which is, and then that's what the signatures are. So.
So I feel that that is a very well-represented group of the B1 district vocalizing their lack of support or their opposition to any changes regarding B1 or B2 multifamily housing on the chart. So after going through the changes, the recommended changes, and going through the definitions, I'm not sure that I have convinced anyone why I am in favor of just leaving the chart status quo. And if projects come forward, they absolutely can be reviewed, but we are not then fundamentally overhauling residential zones or commercial zones by that chart change itself, and we are not superseding or ignoring, negating what the actual definitions of our R1 through R5 zones and B1, B2 zones are. Because by adopting that chart, you're negating the actual definitions that we have because you would be allowing for different usage according to the definitions that are on the books. So that is why I am suggesting that we leave it status quo. I don't believe it needs to go any further because if a developer comes forward and Jenny finds that there is a need, you know, to have a conversation regarding a zoning change, we certainly can have that conversation at that time, or if there's any housing discussion that needs to take place, that also could come before the council. Again, with all respect to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they are a commission, and they are, like the rest of the commissions, an advisory commission. I appreciate all the work that they did on this, and with the recommendation, they're advising us in this recommendation. And upon further studying, I have come to the conclusion that this would not be a very positive thing for the city of Virginia to fundamentally overhaul our zoning definitions and changes in the zoning districts in residential and business in the city of Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Paulson. I do appreciate the work and time you put in, and you answered many of the questions that we had, or I had last Tuesday about specifics, and I do appreciate your time, and it does help understand, help me understand where you're coming from. I'm going to ask Jenny to explain how those definitions and how the chart actually fit together. What does that, how does that work? What does that mean moving forward?
Jenny?
Thank you. So as Counselor Paulson read the definitions, the district regulations, those are the regulations that kind of oversee the actual zone districts, and then the chart is what tells you what's allowed per kind of guidance of that, those district establishments. And so that's why it's set up the way that it is with either permitted, not allowed, conditional use types of items on that chart. So they do not, I would say, in this instance, there's a lot of very specific language in the ordinance overall that can be challenging because it's hard to make interpretations sometimes when everything is very, very black and white, which is a good, can be a good thing, but also when new development comes in or new ideas come in, it's hard to work around those with such set parameters. So that's why we're looking at potentially, yeah, fundamentally changing some of the districts because there hasn't been change in so long, and to allow and open up for different types of options and opportunities for development is where a lot of the conversation was stemming from. So we'll just have to look at other opportunities if council feels that these are not appropriate, you know, after looking through the ordinance, because there's lots of pieces of it, looking at it as an overall piece of a document, you know, it's hard to segment out, but they relate to each other in many different ways. That'd help answer your question.
Yes, that helps a lot. And I can, I do see, I understand where, for example, the conversion of a single-family dwelling to more, no more than four, going from nothing to permitted, I can understand that, and doing a conditional use. All the folks we've had in here tells us that we need housing on all the levels. We need rental, we need larger housing, we need senior housing, we need young family housing, we head of everything. And I think, for me, knowing my neighborhood as well as I do, I'm curious to know how many of the conversions happened overnight and how many conversions from a single-family to a multifamily unit never made it to any paperwork anywhere. However, those are also needs that we have in the city, and when done right, it's amazing. We just have such a stock of rentals in this town that are unsafe or undesirable because of the lack of maintenance. And the city has worked extremely hard on creating the stepping stones to getting every house safe enough and every rental safe enough for my grandmother to live in. And I think that what the Planning and Zoning Committee is doing is looking forward to see how do we continue to help that happen as new people move into town and new investors move into town, and they want to. There's several of the homes on Fifth Avenue that are already multi-units, and they are all pretty nice. They are managed quite well. I, again, just, I'm having a hard time just saying absolutely not and going back. So I'd be willing to, again, send this back to Planning and Zoning and have them look at some of those changes moving forward. But again, Counselor Paulson, I do appreciate your explanations and your pointing it out. Some of your points are very well-taken, and I do agree with some of them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Johnson. So before we go to Counselor Beyondich, however this moves forward, I read through the ordinance many times, and some of the, you know, I have some questions about it, but overall, I think the order is pretty solid. It's a chart that's concerning to me. The definition is as congruent to the chart. I'm going to have to look at the chart, make some additional changes to that chart, and whether it gets sent back or whether we vote to revert back to the original chart and then start over on the chart. The wording is good, I'd like to see it come together and answer some of these questions. I have some of the same questions that Counselor Paulson had about these things and those examples I gave and those examples that Counselor Paulson gave. I just need, I'd like to see the chart adjusted just a little bit to address some of the issues, not only business owners but the residential properties, and I do believe these are fundamental, overall, significant changes that would require some public input. So, Counselor Beyondich?
Thank you. And I'm not sure if we have the answer to this. How many rent- And I'm not sure if we have the answer to this. How many rentals versus single-family homes do we have in Virginia?
Jenny, what is the percentage of our rental units?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I can get it to you.
Thank you. That had just been brought to my attention by somebody. Does that affect any of our funding if it, if the balance is not there? So that negatively affects our funding or?
It could. If our, if our population drops due to the specific type of rentals like Airbnbs, which are short-term rentals, not actual monthly rentals, that would, that could potentially, I mean, that would take a lot of Airbnbs, but it could potentially drop our population size, which would then affect other things such as, excuse me, LGA, the state aid, I mean, things like that, that are population-based.
Thank you. And I just, having had a business downtown, that one kind of struck home for me of the lower-level living quarters. I don't know if anybody's had the opportunity to go to see Crosby. They have revitalized that whole town with upper-level living. Downtown Fargo has resurrected their downtown, and it's all upper-level, high-end apartments. So I think it can be done. And I just want to recognize all the building owners downtown that have businesses, that have invested in their businesses, and listen to what they're telling us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Beyondich. Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. Would you read that back? Motion back, please.
Moved by Councilor Paulson, supported by Councilor Freedle, recommend no change to the chart 11.13, district regulations remain status quo.
And that just relates to the chart? That's the motion? Okay, there's motion and support. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Freedle?
So in the interest of conducting city business and assisting Jenny in upgrading the ordinance, Councilor Paulson has very eloquently identified, targeted at least four areas on the chart. Can we act on those areas as a council now to change those back to original rather than starting from scratch on the entire document? I mean, we need to get this done. And so there's not that many that need to be changed. You've identified them. Or is that not all?
These are just a few. There are others, I believe, but I'll refer to Councilor Paulson to answer that question. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. You hit the nail on the head. Those are the only ones that have been changed, and those are the ones that I am not comfortable with according to the definitions. That's why I recommended status quo, because those changes do fundamentally change residential and business. And then they are not congruent with the definition. But there is no other changes in that chart. It is specifically the ones I just addressed.
We'll leave it as is.
That's as, right, yeah.
So the chart is the same as it was for the exception of those four items. So the motion on the floor by Councilor Paulson, and the second for discussion is to not change those four items and revert back to what the original, I'm sorry, excuse me, the, please continue.
I still struggle somewhat with all of the work that's been done to, and the rationale put in place for making those changes or at least suggesting those changes in the interest of moving this community forward in the minds of those that sit on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we're discounting that to some degree, you know, and in a sense, going back to the drawing board again. It's like, we push back, and maybe justifiably and legitimately so, we're pushing back for things that we just don't see as being reasonable for moving forward on. But I just struggle with the tasks that we put in place on behalf of the commissions to bring forth those recommendations to us, and we shut them down. And it's, and we're doing that with some regularity, in my opinion. So, but I see where we're going. Like, those four items are the things that we just are not approving of. And so to revert back to the original, I guess that's the direction we're going. But in my mind, that's just setting us, making us move backward rather than forward as a city. So, thank you.
Thank you. With all due respect, I kind of disagree with that because I think that this is a significant overhaul and significant changes about permitting and conditional use process in Virginia can fundamentally change the climate, not only business climate downtown, but residential climate as well. And so I don't think that we're discounting all the work that was done by Planning and Zoning. They did the work to make those recommendations. We have to follow those recommendations. The ordinance itself, the changes that were made in that, I think there's a lot of work there. And I think we all agree that this is really a good document to move forward. It's the chart issue with respect to the fundamental changes that have to be done. And so this has been a long, arduous process now. Going back to your drawing board for a little while longer, it's going to be a permanent change to our regulations. So if it takes a little bit more time, I'm comfortable with that. Not a lot more time, but a little more time to get that done. But I still think if we're going to make these changes, that the business community, particularly downtown Chestnut Street, and the residential individuals should have the opportunity to weigh in on this. It just shouldn't be a fundamental change because it's, their changes are significant and significantly affect both commercial and residential properties. They should have an opportunity to weigh in. Yes, it's our decision, elected by to make those decisions, but I think informing the public and the business is important to do so. Thank you. Councilor Johnson?
Question, Jenny, for you that just popped into my head. These towns that have been mentioned, Fargo, Crosby, have we looked at what their zoning looks like to see if we are, like, is this way off? I'm just curious to know if that's something, since those are the cities that are being compared. I'm curious to know if we've looked at what they do for their zoning.
Jenny?
I have not looked at those cities specifically. Fargo in particular is much larger and likely has many more zone districts than we do. But we certainly can take a peek at some of those other cities that were brought up today and consider what they've done and how they've addressed some of the issues that we might have similar concerns with.
I would respectfully ask that the zoning commission take a look at those as we're moving forward in general because no need to reinvent the wheel if they found a successful formula that we can borrow and adapt accordingly. I think that would be prudent. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Councilor Bachsneider?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Paulson, for your explanation on everything. You explained that in a really easy-to-understand way. For me, specifically for the R1 districts, I agree would be fundamentally changing it too much. But as for the business districts, both the commercial PUD and the multifamily housing are already allowed under conditional. So we're not saying no, never. We're just saying it's a conditional use versus permitted use, which is, I think, really important. If we were saying no, never, I feel like I'd be having a whole different conversation. But because it's already conditional, that's why I'm comfortable leaving it status quo. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bachsneider. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. And please read the motion back one more time. Pam, thank you.
Moved by Councilor Paulson, supported by Councilor Freedle, recommend no change to the chart 11.13, district regulations and to remain status quo.
Thank you. That's a motion and support. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Roll call, please. Pam?
Freedle?
Aye.
Huffy?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Motley?
Yes.
Paulson?
Aye.
Beyondich?
Aye.
Bachsneider?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one. Thank you.
Item number 13 is a request to approve the resolution appointing our prosecuting attorney, Michael Carney, as an agency account manager.
Move to support. Okay. Moved by Councilor Paulson, supported by Councilor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is a request to approve the 2025 Solid Waste Holler License for Norland Environmental Services and businesses Walters Waste and Recycling Solutions.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Motley. Is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is preliminary property negotiations for sale of land parcel ID 09000300, should be 36960. It would be a closed session per Minnesota Statute 13D05 subdivision 3.1.
Okay, thank you. And before we go to item 15, maybe it'd be prudent to find out, is there any, are there any other items of concern to be brought for the council today before we move to closed session? Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Matt Enbret and Jim Rossfett. When they started doing our alley on 300 block of 8th Street, there was no notification that there'd be no access. And because of their diligence, working with the contractors, the next lock over was given paper copies saying, hey, get your stuff out of the alley Monday morning. You're not going to have access. And I just wanted to thank them and the contractor for being understanding and having that level of communication. It was very helpful for my neighbors to be able to do that. And I saw several people Sunday taking care of that. So it is messy, but I appreciate the people's patience as they're working through this. And it's, I've been watching outside my door, and it's not as simple as repaving. There's a lot of work going into this, and there's a lot of folks doing a lot of good stuff to make our alleys better and improve the city of Virginia. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Any other items of concern before we move into closed session? We have a long day afternoon ahead of us, so let's get this done before we go into closed session today. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we needed to preliminarily pass then, because it would be the first reading of the ordinance. We need to, on the Chapter 11, the actual land use regulations 11.02 definitions. Don't we need?
First reading would be next week.
Yeah, but don't we need to move that forward with the, it's not the chart. We voted to keep the chart status quo, but the actual definitions on 11.02, are we going to approve those definitions for the ordinance?
We could do that, yes, absolutely. You want to make that motion?
I would move to have those, I would move to approve them.
Support, move to approve the definitions and of the ordinance itself. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Moved by Councilor Paulson and supported by Councilor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Bachsneider?
Thank you. Jenny, if I recall, did we have to add one minor change to the daycare section? And could that be included in this to be moved forward as well? Thank you.
Jenny?
Correct. It was, there was a link to Minnesota legislation. It was the rules, and I'm looking for the actual rule number here, but that was changed in a previous version, or a most current version that was sent out. So, sorry, I put all my notes away already. So that would be changed to Minnesota Rule Chapter 2400, subpart 24, instead of just Minnesota legislation.
Yeah, okay. The amendment is by the motion maker in the second to do that, to add that on there. Thank you, Councilor Bachsneider, for that. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. No other items to come before other items at this point in time. We'll entertain a motion and move to closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Motley makes the motion to move the closed session on our item 15, preliminary property negotiation for the sale of land parcel ID 09000300, 036960 pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D05 subdivision 3 subsection 1. Is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Bachsneider. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We ask all of you who are in the audience to please vacate the city council chambers so we can move into closed session. Thank you.